It is? I'm gonna test it out.
Yeah, there you go.
It looked fake.
Right here.
It looks fake.
When they actually gave me a cell number, if they gave me a number, I'm like, I like that number, can I get another one?
Yeah.
And they're like, I guess, and so they just kept on going through until I got the number.
Ringing it.
Fifty-eight hundred, I'm like, I like that one. I was like...
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
That's very cool.
Ready? It is one o'clock on Tuesday, October nineteenth. This is a regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum? Or, Mister? Sorry?
Yes, Mayor, no problem.
Thank you. It's my turn to do the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Let us find time to think about that, that is all good in this world, and reflect with gratitude on all that we have been given in life, our family, our friends, and especially our community. We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting to help us make decisions to move our community forward in a positive direction. Be with all of our citizens in our community today, but especially be with our first responders and our healthcare workers, and watch over them and keep them all safe. We ask that you continue to bless our community, and especially our state and nation, and thus we pray. Amen.
For A is approval of minutes. Any changes? Has anybody? All stand as presented. Item five is public comment. This is a time during the meeting where we set aside for people to come address the city commission on any items that are not on the agenda. We give you five minutes, and when you do come forward, please state your name. All right, item six A. Oh, maybe not. Too early for six A. Let's go to...
No?
No?
On six A?
Okay. Yeah, sorry.
Item six A, Cecilia Douglas, on behalf of Kansas Children's Service League, requests that governing body consider a motion to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of October twenty-twenty-one as Head Start Awareness Month in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this item?
So moved.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. The proclamation reads, whereas established in nineteen sixty-five, Head Start is a national, federally funded, early childhood development program that serves children and families, and whose purpose is to help children and parents develop skills for success in their schools, workplaces, and at home, and whereas Head Start creates, repairs, and restores healthy parent-child relationships, which are the foundation of a strong family, and whereas Head Start improves school readiness and increases graduation rates, and whereas Head Start is committed creating a stronger, more resilient, and educated workforce for the future of Kansas. And now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, the mayor of the city of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty-twenty-one as Head Start Awareness Month in Garden City, Kansas, and encourage all parents of young children to participate in activities with your child, such as reading a book with your child, attending a play, and going to a park or the library with your child during the month of October. Signed and sealed the nineteenth day of October twenty-twenty-one, Roy Cessna, Mayor. We have a group here from Head Start. Would you guys like to come forward? And do you have any information that you would like to present? I know we've got folders.
Briefly, yes.
Sure.
Good afternoon, I'm Cecilia Douglas, the Development Manager for Kansas Children's Service League. Thank you, Mayor Cessna, and Commissioners, for recognizing October as Head Start Awareness Month. At Kansas Children's Service League Head Start, we've served children in Garden City for over forty-four years. We've been serving children and families in Kansas for over a hundred and twenty-eight years. Our programs, of course, work to repair, restore healthy parent-child relationships, which we know are the foundation of a strong family. We help families succeed now to be better parents and better employees. We are creating a stronger and more resilient and educated workforce for the future of Kansas and Garden City residents. Of course, we know this improves the prosperity and success for all Kansas communities. At this time, we would like to invite everybody to join us on Saturday, October thirtieth, for a fun afternoon of trunk-or-treating to run alongside the Fannie County Public Library's Halloween extravaganza event. Let's see. Yeah, and thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Keep her hard work.
All right.
That'd be great. I don't know. It feels like we were just here.
Question, question four.
Right? Okay. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Item six B, John Linder requests an opportunity to appeal a nuisance abatement mowing charge, not a fine, for the property generally located at two oh five East Mary Street.
Hi, Trent.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Trent Maxwell, Director of NAPR services. Come before you at the request of John Linder's requesting the opportunity to appeal the nuisance abatement for the mowing fee. A little bit of background to bring us up to speed, and I believe you might be here to speak on behalf of him. Originally, this violation was created for found on August third. The violation into the system, permit system, was created on the fourth, and it was mowed out on the fifth of August, with the compliance date of August sixteenth. We had our contracted mowers show up on August eighteenth to abate the nuisance, after which we received a request at a later date in writing form from Mr. Linder. The history of the property, there's been ten cases that we know of since two thousand nine that were out of compliance, five of which we have noted that they were appealed. At this time, you may approve or not approve the appeal, and like I say, I believe Mr. Linder is with us, that he can speak directly to.
Okay.
Then any other questions if you have for me?
Thank you for your time, and I hope everyone knows that when this was on the docket, at your last meeting, I had not been given notice. I didn't blow it off. I came up here when I got calls from a couple of clients who said, hey, I heard your, heard your name on the, on the TV or something, I don't know. But anyway, I hope, I hope that's clear, that, that I was not here simply because I didn't get notice. And I appreciate your time in hearing this matter. I do want to speak to the prior violations, I'm not even sure that we ought to be talking about them, but they do tie into what a reasonable cost for mowing that property is. So I do want to talk about that later. First, I received, and I assume you've all read my letter, which Mr. Maxwell asked that I write, which outlines things pretty well. But anyway, when I got the letter that was mailed on the fifth, I got it on the seventh, I went up and looked at the property, I agreed that the, the area that I had been furnished a picture of, and for your perhaps certification, when you get one of these violation letters, they, the city encloses a, a photograph of what is in violation, what they're claiming to be in violation, and, and that you're given ten days to eradicate. Mr. Maxwell did say that the, that the notice said that it was to be eradicated by the sixteenth. The notice actually says within ten days, and at the bottom, it says compliance date, sixteenth. There's no place in the city ordinances that authorizes that date. The, the specifics of your city ordinances says within ten days, the landowner is to receive a notice saying that it is to be eradicated within ten days. I have always counted ten days, adding three days, and we'll get into that here in a moment, but, and I'll try to do a better job of staying on track here. This is the letter that, or this is the picture that came with the letter. The, the photograph is taken from across the alley, quite, quite ways, to the west of this property, and the photograph is clearly of the weeds on the corner, and I don't know what those...
I don't think I got the same one, Tom. I was...
I don't know what those pictures are, but perhaps you can just pass that around. That's the actual photograph that I received. And it's difficult, your perspective may be difficult if you're not familiar with the property. As I said, that's taken from the, the west, halfway across somebody's yard on the, on the other side of the alley. And it's clearly a picture of the weeds on the corner that have grown up around the utility poles and the city's utility box that is between the poles. I, thank you. When I went up there on the seventh and, and looked at it, I agreed these were out of, these weeds were out of compliance. So I went up the next day on the eighth and cut those all out from the, between the utility poles and the utility box, and that were hanging out into the street, and I cut them back to the alley, to the west, I cut them back five feet to the north, five feet to the, to the east, and on that same day called the man who mows the property for me, and told him, you know, I don't think the lot itself, you know, needs mowing, but, you know, it's August, we, we mow it in preparation for the fall every year anyway. We, we mow it two to three times a year and spray it, so, you know, go ahead and do it. And let's, just to make sure we keep the weed people happy, let's, let's do it by the eighteenth, that's, that's your deadline. Do I need to request more time? He said, no, I can get it done by the eighteenth. And as you know from the letter, he went up there on the eighteenth with his equipment and found that it was already in the process of being mowed. And he thought I'd lined somebody else up, wasn't happy about that, I didn't hear from him, I didn't hear anything more about this. I mowed, I, I drove by it and saw that it had been mowed, because I saw, you know, tracks, and didn't know a thing more about this until I received the bill from the city for nine hundred dollars. I contacted the city, and, and I'll get into this more in a moment, but the times that I received a bill for mowing that property in the past, the bill has been two hundred dollars, and it has always been an hour and a fraction, and it's rounded up to two hundred dollars. Every time. This was nine hundred dollars. I contacted the, the weed department and got a call back the next day, and I asked her, number one, why, the, why the property had been mowed, and she said, well, ten days had expired. And I said, well, I guess that's an issue, I don't think it, it had expired, but did you see that the weeds that you sent me a picture of had been cut out? And she indicated that perhaps she hadn't gone up there, she didn't know one way or the other, and I, I said, well, you know, if, if it's, if you see that those weeds are gone, wouldn't you call the landowners? Said, no, we don't have anybody's phone number. Said, okay. I said, let's talk about the nine hundred dollars. What company mowed it? And she said, well, it wasn't a company. I said, it wasn't a company? She said, no, it was a private individual. I said, okay. She said, if private individuals can just sign up and get on the list. I said, okay. Did you agree to this nine hundred dollars? And she said, no, that's, we don't have any control over that. Well, yes, you do. I mean, if we ran our businesses like that, we wouldn't have businesses anymore. I mean, you, you, you can't just send somebody out there with, with a blank check, and I to this day don't know if it was done with a, a push mower or, or what. The property is two hundred and fifty by four hundred. You clearly mow it with a platform mower attachment to a small tractor or to an ATV. That's, that's the way it's always been done. And it takes, as I said, it takes about an hour, maybe a little more than an hour to, to mow it. So, the first issue is, this, this was the notice I received, right here, that these weeds were not in compliance. I agreed, I took these weeds out, and I did it the day after I got the letter. I, as a, as a matter of being proactive, protective, you know, whatever, I said, I told my mower guy to, let's go ahead and mow it, and let's get it done by this eighteenth as the deadline, you know, because, you know, let, let's just avoid any problems with the city. So, the first, the first issue is, I think I, I think I cut out the weeds that I received a notice of.
Can we?
Yes.
We have a, we have a one fifteen, and we're right at one seventeen, so we have a one fifteen hearing that we need to, we've set, so we need to go to that. So just hold on to that thought process.
Okay.
For now.
Mayor and Commissioners, ten A, a one fifteen scheduled public hearing on the matter of the governing body hearing. Questions, concerns, and comments from the public with regard to the approval of a petition to vacate a public alley at four oh one and three oh five East Kansas Avenue. Following the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following ordinance to vacate the public alley at four oh one and three oh five East Kansas Avenue, and if approved, that ordinance would be twenty-nine sixteen dash twenty-twenty-one. Trent?
Can open a public hearing?
We'll open the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, so the background of this, we have four oh one, who is looking at redeveloping the property. His property owner's name is Enrique Alvarado. On the property, we have an alley, at some point in the past, part of this alley has been vacated. The portion remaining is actually would, would belong to the property at three oh five, Kansas. Both applicants or both parties are aware, and they, they are in favor of this being vacated. The alley is approximately twenty-five feet by seventy-five and a half feet long. The alley has no city utilities or lines served by Cox Communications. The alley has a main extension served by Black Hills Energy. If the petition is, if the petition to vacate the public alley is granted, Black Hills Energy requests the property owners grant them an easement to maintain that main extension. A notice of petition to vacate was sent out by Certified Mill to Cox Communications, Black Hills Energy, and AT&amp;T. However, AT&amp;T did not respond. The governing body may approve the petition to vacate the public alley, the governing body may not approve the petition to vacate the public alley, are the alternatives, and staff recommends alternative one.
Anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this? Okay. Oh!
Good afternoon, my name is Enrique Alvarado, I'm the owner, I'm the one that purchased the property from, from the city at the four oh one East Kansas Avenue. The purpose for vacating this property in order to get a better development project going on into that property, just basically, I think it's good for everybody just to vacate it, you know, it's, it's just, I think it'd be a, it'd be a good, good deal to do, but as far as I know, Black Hills went in and cleared up the, there was an old meter in there that went and cleaned it up and take all the piping out and everything, so as far as I know, there's no more utilities there. They moved all the utilities out to the back of the alleys, so having access to it, I don't think it'd be necessary to have access to it. You know, they'll have access to the alleys. That'd be my comment on that.
Okay.
For, for the service. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Mayor, Commissioner, I met with Black Hills Energy down there, and they do have an active gas line in that area at the very north end that serves that building to the west, and their request in what Trent had produced was to have an easement dedicated to them to cover that service line should the whole alley be vacated. So there still is an active natural gas service line, just in the very northeast corner of that piece of property.
So would we need to approve the easement also, Mike, or?
He needs to, I think, well, I think...
If we approve, but, but the easement would be part of that?
No, there is no easement at this point.
Okay. Just so that the owner knows that Black Hills has that gas line there and is requesting an easement to cover that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the Commissioners? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-nine sixteen dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance vacating a public alley in the city of Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. Okay.
There is another public hearing at one thirty.
Yes.
Mister?
John, we do have a one thirty public hearing too, that's eight minutes. Do you want to hold off, or do you want to see how far we get, understanding that? The good news is our one forty-five public hearing canceled, so...
Are you addressing me, man?
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to talk into the mic and turn around and see you out of the corner.
I just didn't want you to get started and then...
Have to stop again. Okay.
So let's move on to the next item I think we can take care of. Yeah, the governing bodies, this is six C. The governing body is asked to approve a request by Fire Marshal Robertson and Western Enterprises Fireworks to authorize a Veterans Day fireworks show to be located at the Fannie County Fairground on November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, including the street closure on Allen Street and South Main Street. This is, there's nothing different about the fireworks show than we've done in previous Veterans Day. This is procedurally something new to have the governing body authorize the discharge of fireworks.
Any questions on this? Entertain a motion on this item, then?
I move to approve the request to authorize the Veterans Day fireworks show.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Dick. Any discussion on that item? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Take on a little bit of the report of the city manager. Congratulations to Public Works and Utilities Director Mike Muirhead on the occasion of his receiving the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Gilbert Hansen Jr. Outstanding Service Award from the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, and I know it's pretty customary for us to click a photo, but KMEA is actually going to come down on November sixteenth to our commission meeting.
Very nice.
They notified me of that this morning, so we'll get two bites of the apple, we'll congratulate him now in a more subdued, in a more subdued fashion, and then we'll, and then we'll get really crazy on the sixteenth of November, but congratulations, Mike.
Congratulations.
Speaks highly of you and your staff.
Do they have a video on that, too, of that presentation? They didn't have it?
No.
Okay.
They're going to come here on the sixteenth, yeah, yeah, yeah. And congratulations, item B, congratulations to the Garden City Water Department on the occasion of their recent recognition by the Irrigation Association for water conservation outreach efforts. Congratulations, Fred, to your, your, your team. Do you want to come talk about that award?
Briefly?
Briefly, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Just to give you a little brief background, the Irrigation Association named the city of Garden City as the recipient of the Smart Water Application Technologies Outstanding Public Engagement Award, and the award recognizes the water provider with a successful program focused on public engagement and education on smart, efficient irrigation technologies and practices. So Irrigation Association represents all types of irrigation industry, both agricultural and domestic. Again, we have the Customer Water Use Report, which I think the Commissioners are aware of. We educate customers about water use at their property, provide tips and information to help them save water, and then merge our data together with our geographic information system data to create a custom report for all of our residential customers in the city. Each customer's report compares their usage to the average usage of their neighborhood and the average user, usage of all users in the city. Since starting the program, we've seen consistent declines in our gallons per capita day usage. In twenty-seventeen, when we first started the report, our gallons per capita day was a hundred and eighty-two per person. In twenty-twenty, that number was a hundred and sixty-two, so if you multiply that number times thirty thousand or so, it adds up to a fair difference. Previous awardees include the city of Fort Collins, Colorado in twenty-nineteen, and Sonoma County Water Agency of Santa Rosa, California last year. So we're pleased and appreciate all the work of the entire department, and including staff at Fannie County Economic Development that have helped us crunch numbers, and it's, it's been a good report, and we're glad that it's recognized, and it's actually being replicated in some other areas now outside the municipal use, so thank you.
Congratulations, good job.
Thank you.
And we'll hear a report here in a little bit. Don't have that window of time right now. Real quickly, though, Trent, you asked to be able to address the Commission and introduce some new staff.
Yes, we are pleased to add two more wonderful members to our team. We have John Persisto, who's from Woodstock, Illinois, and Sandra Rodriguez, who is from Garden City. John is one of our planners, Sandra's one of our planning techs. If you guys wish to say anything, John?
They need to, yeah, you need to say something.
All right, well, welcome, welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome to Garden City.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Well, welcome back home to Garden City.
Are we near enough to one thirty to talk slow?
Maybe run through the meetings and note, and we'll...
Okay, yeah, I would, meetings and notes are on there. Draw your attention to a couple of things. Remember the early wake-up tomorrow, or at least the early getting out onto the streets tomorrow to get into the Chamber of Commerce breakfast, we'll do the State of the City address there. Also, an item that's not on this, but would want to call your attention to as well as the public's, the November ninth League of Kansas Municipalities, I think they're called Regional Suppers now, they may have changed the name of it, but that's what they are. It'll be held here in Garden City at the Fennup Center on November ninth, so add that to your calendars. I believe there's an opportunity for a league training that day too, if you're interested in that, contact, seal in, and she'll RSVP for you. Now, I think, ready for our one thirty public hearing?
Yes.
By my clock? Item 10B.
I'll open the public hearing at this time.
Item 10B, the public hearing for the consideration to adopt the development plan and establish the Rural Housing Incentive District for Hunter's Glen Phase One by ordinance is brought before the governing body. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2917. Dash, Alicia?
Mayor and Commissioners, as required by the RHID statute, Hunter's Glen Phase One comes before the governing body to adopt the attached development plan to establish the RHID. This action is the last step of the development needs to take before the governing body in the RHID process. Hunter Glen, Hunter's Glen Phase One is generally located at the 3300 block of North Third Street. This development will consist of 23 lots in which the developer, OICOS Development intends to provide lots to build duplexes and fourplexes. The development will potentially recoup more than half of the reimbursable expenses of the RHID. According to our latest Community Housing Assessment Team, to meet our housing needs, we need to build 120 housing units per year over the next eight years, based on the current built-in 2020, 136 in 2021. By the end of 2020, we issued 40 certificate of occupancies and have issued 39 certificate of occupancies in 2021. In 2020, we met our housing needs by 33%. Therefore, according to the CHAT study and the rate of the housing development, Garden City shows a need for housing to be built within this development. If the ordinance is adopted, the county, USD 457, Garden City Community College, and West Plains Extension District, as taxing entities, will have 30 days in which to evaluate the proposed RHID. Shall a taxing entity determine it has an adverse effect on their jurisdiction, then the taxing entity will need to adopt a resolution stating such. If no such resolutions are passed, then the ordinance shall be in effect. If within that timeframe, any, any of the taxing entities pass such a resolution, then the city will need to take action to repeal the ordinance as required by statute. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the ordinance or the governing body may not approve the ordinance. Staff would recommend alternative one. For the fiscal note, the developer will be using private financing to fund the eligible costs for the RHID. The city will reimburse tax, property tax increments to the developer over the life of the project, which is up to 15 years. The amount of the property tax distributions cannot exceed the, the 3 million over the life of the RHID. And I believe the developers are here if you guys have any questions for them.
Or if they would like to say anything during the public hearing?
Talk up the project.
That's right. Yeah, looks good.
Kevin Enyer, I live in Lee Sump, Missouri. Really is what it is, a mix of fourplexes, duplexes. All the duplexes will be ADA, fully compliant, USDA financed, farm worker housing. Going to try to get as many done in tax year 2022 as we possibly can. Frontload it as much as possible. As Alicia mentioned, it's privately financed. Private construction financing will be fully bonded, or performance and maintenance. It's, we are the same, so the, the group. I'm the builder, and the gentleman that runs OICOS Development is the same two parties that did the duplexes north of the cemetery. He left the BDC, started OICOS, and I'm a contractor for hire, so I'm building wherever he wants me to be. So, and then this gentleman will be our superintendent. So I brought him down with me today, kind of showing him around.
Yeah, we saw the 60 units. That's, that's ambitious, but that would be very helpful.
Eighty-six is total in the, the first phase, yeah.
Okay.
But the good news is, we already ran that over mile-long sanitary line, so the hard work's done.
There you go.
Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any other questions from the public on this? None being, I'll close the public hearing, then. Commissioner will take up this item. Hear a motion on this item?
Move to approve ordinance 2917-2021.
Commissioner Dick made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Euler made the second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Aye. I didn't get my aye in there, sorry.
Okay. That item passed. You were writing? Okay.
You're going a little too fast, sorry.
I'll slow down.
It takes all kinds.
I'll slow down. Okay.
Yeah, if we could resume back to 6B. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Sorry, but that timing of that worked out in the middle of our public hearings. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, I think where I was, was just pointing out that I believe that the notice, or that the violation that I was put on notice of had been eradicated, and just as a major, a precautionary measure, I had told my mower to go ahead and mow the lot, although I looked at it when I was up there. It didn't appear to be, to, to need mowing or to be in violation to me. And I gave him the 18th as the date because the notice, it's dated, dated the 4th, but you always check the envelope, I've, I've learned over the years, and it was dated the, the 5th. So I counted the 10 days plus three, and that's where we came up with the, the 18th. Now, I know you have been advised by your lawyer, and you should obviously listen to your lawyer, and I know this from the public access TV, that you, you were told that the 6206, the, the statute that I put in my letter, only applies in district court. The language of 206 is in computing any time period specified in this chapter or in any local rule or court order or any statute or administrative rule or regulation. I think that pretty clearly applies across the board to everything. And even if you took the position that it only applies to statutes, the city's ordinances are creatures of statute. They are, they are authorized and enabled by statute, particularly on weeds. There's a specific weed statute that is the default that applies to all cities. It's got a time limitation. It's got a notice procedure of personal service or certified mail. And then it says, and the city, the individual cities are also enabled by this statute to pass their own ordinance with procedures. So it's, I, I don't know, I don't know how a reasonable argument can be made that this doesn't apply across the board. It's simply not limited to actions in district court with all respect to, to counsel. But to bring us back for a moment, I mean, we're dealing, we're dealing with something where I was simply going over on a board to make sure that the, the city, the city was happy. I had already taken the weeds out that they sent me a picture of. So now, as to the, the reasonableness of the bill, $900. And, and I think that's, you know, one of the reasons that we're here because as your counsel has pointed out to you, the, the way the, the ordinance is written, the appeal, there's actually a five-day appeal after you get your notice. I, I didn't have any reason to appeal it. I drove up there and looked at it, and the weeds on the corner that I had been sent a picture of, I agreed were in violation. So I didn't have a reason to ask for an appeal. I, the minute I got the $900 bill, I asked to start whatever appeal procedure was available, and that's what brings us here today. The allegation that we, if, if we're going to look at ancient history, that there have been 10 violations in the, in the past 10 years, simply is not accurate. And I think the city concedes that their records are not very good on this. They don't know, you know, what happened on any particular violation. Well, I can tell you that I have always taken care of the weeds, and I've always computed my 10 days according to statute. And I've always taken care of the, of the weeds within that timeframe, every time I've gotten a letter. Now, the, the oddities of this tie into what it should take to mow that lot. On three occasions over the past 12 years, I have received bills from the city for mowing the lot. Every time, it's been $200. Every time, it's been an hour and a fraction of an hour rounded up to $200. The, the first time, I got the bill out of the blue, never having received a notice of violation. I brought that to the attention of the department. They scrambled around for a while and then conceded they hadn't sent a letter out. So, you know, that, that may be on their books. I, I don't know, but that was erased. The second one, I had had the lot mowed. I got a letter, and I had had, had the lot mowed, and the city had, I received a bill, and, you know, I said, I had this mowed, and you knew I had it mowed, and they had forgotten to call off their contractor. And their contractor had gone up there and mowed it again. $200. So I, I didn't pay that under the circumstances, obviously, but the point is, it was $200. And the third time, Matt was involved in that. The notice I received did not receive, did not contain the notice of appeal. And so the appeal, I was afforded the appeal of the whole process after the fact. The commission appointed Matt as the person to handle the appeal, and the $200 bill, again, $200, was waived. And my concern at that time was, but I've received this letter, and you only send out one of those per year, so how am I, I mean, what's to keep somebody from the department from driving by and saying, ooh, that's in violation. Let's mow it again. And I received no, no additional notice. So Matt, as an accommodation to me on that occasion, agreed that if he heard that they thought it was in violation again, that he would call me. So, and it wasn't, and he didn't have to, and so on and so forth, but he was very accommodating on that occasion. But the point is, it was a $200 bill, which I, you know, which, which ended up being waived. Going back a little further than that, I'm, I'm going to go 14, 15 years, give or take. The city mowed the lot for me for a number of years as, in, in exchange for snow fencing on the property. And on one occasion, I, when they were doing it, I stopped by and, and asked the individual who was loading his equipment up and asked him how often they were mowing it. And he said, he thought three times a year, but he wasn't sure. And I said, how long's it take? And he said, right at an hour, maybe a little more if I load the equipment up. So that's one more piece of information about how long it takes to mow, you know, the lot. On two occasions over the past 10 years, I have gotten letters, which would be in their records as violations, and I asked individual city commission members, after I went and looked at the lot, I asked individual city council members to please go look at the lot. And on those occasions, I was told that they agreed with me, and it, the lot was not in violation, to ignore the letter and consider it withdrawn. Well, I don't know if it's withdrawn in their records or not, but the, the, the allegation that I have received a letter every year for the last 10 years is simply not accurate. I think that that, and, and I don't know if Matt remembers or not, but that, that bill was $200. Matt, do you remember that?
I remember we've talked about this property, John, a few times, but the numbers, I don't remember.
Okay. All right. But anyway, that's, that brings me to, to the point that I, which counsel may have already shared with you. I have bitten the bullet on this. I don't think I owe a dime under the circumstances, but I've bitten the bullet on this, and I said, you know, I didn't, I, I, I had agreed to pay my guy to mow it, and he didn't mow it because the city mowed it first. So that's 130 I didn't have to spend. I will also, if I, if I don't get it settled here, then I've got to file something in district court, and I've got those filing fees. So under the circumstances, I have offered to pay $200, which is what it should cost, or something less than that, to mow this, this lot. And I think that is what is reasonable. Excuse me. I had the wrong lunch to be, to be talking. But as I said, I have, I have bitten the bullet, and I have offered $200. I, I, I think that's reasonable. This 900 is just, I'm not trying to offend anybody, but it's just ridiculous. And, and you, you can't, I mean, the, the weed department just can't have a, have a list of, of individuals and send them out with a blank check because somebody else is paying for it. And that's just crazy. And we don't run our businesses that way, and they can't run their business that way either. And on the prior occasions, on the three prior occasions that I've already discussed with you, those were by commercial companies. Those were by companies that, that, that mow for, for a living and, and have the right, the right kind of equipment. So I don't know. Any questions?
Any questions from the commission?
I have a question, probably for Trent more than you, John, but as far as, let's go back to the mower company. I know, like, the city contracts a lot of individuals. How many, how many contracted mowing companies or private entities do you think the city has?
I don't know how many contracted, so it might be.
Trent, could you move to the mic so people could hear, please? Thank you.
I'm not aware exactly of how many mowers we have, but it would be a contracted mower, whether it's a single individual or a company. They are identifying themselves to us as someone that we are contracting with them to provide those functions. And if I.
Well, I want to, so do you set the rate, or does the mower set the rate?
We set the rate. The rate is $100 per hour, and then the mower fee is, is whatever that contracted amount is. So in this case, it is less than $100 per hour. And a couple of things, if I may, just to elaborate a little bit. So the photo taken, photos are meant to be a representation of the violation. You yourself, as property owners, if you've got a front yard, backyard, side yard, we're not going to send out 20 photos. The photos that you see in the packet were there before the mowing, so you can see that it was clearly in violation. The property is large. I don't know what kind of equipment they used. I have not myself. I have not, uh, myself personally, uh, dealt with this mowing company. But we know it's out of compliance there, that's along the alleyway. So, I don't think it's a matter of compliance. I can't speak again to the nine hours because I don't have a personal relationship with this mower. But once it's left in our hands, uh, we go through our procedures that are adopted. And that is, we go out for our contracted companies to take care of the, abate the problem for us.
Well, the ordinance does say weeds. And so, there's part of these pictures that you have here that are, I mean, I don't see any weeds. I just see, I mean, you know, whatever, I mean weeds, but not the big tall ones. So, I'm curious about why they mowed the entire lot and not just the violation. Because according to, according to the letter sent out to him, it talks about a weed violation, but not about a grass or a.
It's one of the same ordinance, tall grass weeds. We have a twelve inch compliance. So, anything over twelve inches, whether it's grass or weeds, unless it's been deemed agriculture, could be subject to the same ordinance.
So, did that price go up from last year or from previous years? So, the price for mowing has been?
It's, uh, it's set by code section. And it talks about any abatement under chapter thirty-eight. The hourly rate is one hundred dollars per hour or any, or any fraction thereof. And that's in chapter forty-two.
I'm also kinda curious of the previous cases. I know we had ten that was listed and sent to us. And John, you'd mentioned that those weren't accurate. I, I guess I'd like to hear why. Or are those accurately registered or taken into the city's budget?
We have, uh, up until two thousand nine and, and ongoing till now, under digital software, permit software. That is where the ten cases came from. As John explained, some of these circumstances, once we find a violation, no matter how the remedy is, whether it's abated, appealed, it could be as simple as Matt forgiving the situation because of the items he mentioned, which is fine. In our system, it still show a case that was created or a violation created. And then the language could have been appealed or abated. Abated is typically when the contractor abates it. Appealed is typically when it's waived and there's no thanks. When there's no comment, that's typically the property owner has complied with the violation and there's no further action needed. So, we do have in our systems ten logged cases, whether or not they ever came to any form of a fee or a meeting with commissioners. We know of a couple that did. And it's not always the case that it comes to this point.
Are they, were they consecutive, are they consecutive cases or, I mean, consecutive years?
I, I have the list in the, it's in the packet. There were several years that worked consecutive. I think there were a couple of years that were skipped.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got nine, eleven, fourteen, two thousand nine.
And one thing, just for clarification, if nothing else for the public, the viewing public, we are more than willing to accommodate to add extensions like John felt he didn't need one. I would encourage anyone, if you need a few more days to call us, we don't wanna be in this situ. We don't wanna hire people to mow other people's property. So, we'd rather give an extension, get that done, get in compliance, as long as the extension is reasonable. In this case, uh, our compliance date being the sixteenth and black bold at the bottom, no one should ever assume that there's some other count to that without talking. And, you know, we would probably, again, go to our legal counsel for the advice of what that section, uh, of the statute references and if it applies to our notification.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item, on what we wanna do?
I'll move to not approve.
There's been a motion to not approve the appeal?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second? Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
That item passed. Thank you.
I think we're ready for seven C. Is that what you have, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh,
Yes.
Water Resource Manager Jones will provide an update on water consumption for two thousand twenty-one in the city of Garden City. Fred?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. And I apologize on the in-between zone on bifocals here. I just wanna give you a, uh, brief seven-page update, uh, it's mostly pictures, uh, on what's going on this year in water consumption in the city. So, uh, first of all, just overall water consumption. We estimate that two thousand twenty-one water consumption will closely mirror our five-year water consumption average. We also anticipate that in two thousand twenty-one, our usage will be approximately five percent less than what we consumed in two thousand twenty. If you remember, two thousand twenty, uh, was kind of an abnormally high water usage year. So, we're glad to see that hopefully, uh, levelizing. Uh, water consumption continues to trend slightly upward when we look, uh, into water usage. The range among consumption totals differs approximately, uh, two hundred and forty-five million gallons over the past five years. So, really, um, it's staying relatively level. But when you look at that trend line, there, there is a bit of an increasing trend. The community is growing, so we would expect to see something there. In previous updates to the commission, staff has noted a slow continued consumption growth during the non-irrigation season. And this growth is indicative of continued residential, commercial, and industrial development and the addition of new water customers that come along with that. Chart below outlines the water consumption by season. And if you'll note on that chart, we've got, it's a three-part chart. So, the green, uh, is showing our consumption during the spring and summer months. The yellow section is showing our consumption during the winter months. And then that blue section below, we separate that out because that represents the water that we purchase from Meatland Electric, uh, through the R O process. And we take, um, a very consistent amount of water every day from that. So, we, we separate that out so you can kinda see, um, what's happening with our own water resources in the different seasons and, and the demands. And it's fairly obvious that our usage essentially doubles, uh, in the summer, the amount of water that we produce from our sources. Customer water consumption, um, overall water consumption for residential use has decreased over the past five years. Overall, residential customers have a growth rate of, that's probably a poor term, a decrease of two percent. But the average residential water meter count has increased, uh, by a hundred and ninety-three meters, uh, or two-point-five percent since two thousand sixteen. So, if you look at, uh, that chart, the blue line is showing the overall residential usage by year. And then the, uh, orange line is showing the increase in water customers by year. So, we've had a fair amount of growth in that sector. Again, where we are seeing growth is commercial and industrial water consumption. Growth in commercial and industrial use has increased an average of three percent over the past five years. And the average commercial industrial meter count has risen by thirty-eight meters or three-point-six percent since two thousand sixteen. I think those numbers, though, if you look at the amount of increases from year to year, uh, are pretty promising because we've added, uh, some very large, uh, customers, uh, to the roles, just due to the nature of business that they're in, uh, on the industrial side. So, again, we feel that, uh, on the industrial and commercial side, especially on the industrial side, those users are gonna be very conscious of their water consumption just by nature. It's an input, uh, into their business model. Non-revenue water use, um, again, shows promising reductions in water consumption. I'm, I'm not going to, uh, jump into the, to the Garden Rapids at the big pool facility. I think you'll be getting an update on that, uh, soon from, uh, Aaron. And I, I don't wanna steal his thunder. But, the, um, this, I thought, was very promising and, uh, indicates that, uh, other departments in the city are, are keeping an eye toward consumption, which is what we need to happen in order to promote consumption among our, our other customers. Data included in the chart below shows that, uh, includes facilities formally attributed to the Garden City Recreation Commission. Uh, two thousand twenty-one estimates indicate water consumption will be approximately forty percent less than it was in two thousand sixteen. The, uh, we also see an average decrease in water use of seven percent per year over the past five years. This saves our customers money because this is, this is water that costs money to produce. But all the, all the customers in Garden City pay for that, uh, through their own rates. So, we're, we're glad to see that. Again, the meter count is pretty flat there. We haven't really added any meters to speak of. But we do see that that usage, um, has had a good decrease. So, that's kinda where we stand on water. Now, I wanna visit a little bit about, um, some things we're doing to address our core values as a community and specifically measuring ourselves against other utilities. So, the first item we wanna visit about is A W W A Utility Benchmarking. That's American Water Works Association. They're an international entity, uh, specifically focused on, um, public water suppliers. The benchmarking program, uh, we started participating in that in two thousand twenty, which was a bit of a challenge, uh, with the pandemic. There's a lot of information and I would say, uh, this overview that I'm gonna give you, it is just a fraction of the data that we get, uh, back from that report. That overview report that we received from A W W A has seventeen pages of different things that we measure. So, um, I had mercy on the. But these are a few things, uh, that I thought were key takeaways from the two thousand twenty-one survey. And keep in mind a couple of things. There's approximately sixty thousand public water utilities in the United States. This survey represents about a hundred and fifty-nine of them. So, when you see these numbers and see Garden City, these are typically the largest water utilities in the United States. But still, you'll, you'll find some things where it's obvious that we're a small utility and other things that I think are promising in terms of how we perform. Our organizational best practices index, um, falls within the twenty-fifth percentile of survey respondents. And so, we identified some areas that we're, um, gonna work to improve that score, uh, to meet median responses. And some of those were succession planning, customer involvement, and despite the fact we're being recognized for customer involvement, optimized asset management and risk management planning. And so, uh, we're engaging in some of those, some of those items as we speak. And, uh, other, other things are long-term, especially on risk management. We've done a complete, uh, risk and resilience assessment this year, as well as a, uh, new emergency response plan, uh, that's being developed with the assistance of P E C. Those are required for us, uh, for all, all utilities our size to be submitted to the E P A. Going down the list, Garden City is likely one of the smallest water utilities. The median utility had a full-time employee, uh, equivalent of a hundred and twenty-two employees. Our water department operates with fourteen employees. Water Department Services, our water department services more customer accounts per, per full-time employee than the median response in the survey. The Garden City Water Department has approximately six hundred and fifteen accounts per full-time employee compared to the median of five hundred and two. That puts us in the seventy-fifth percentile or in the neighborhood of that, according to the survey results. So, um, we feel our staff is getting a lot of things done, uh, per employee and, and we're glad that that information is reflected here. Uh, our employee turnover rate of seven-point-one percent is lower than the median response rate. But our percentage of employees who will be eligible for retirement in the near future is higher than the median response rate. So, basically, that tells us we're gonna have to continue working on succession planning. Really, just passing along the knowledge that's required, uh, for this system is very important to us. And I will say, our staff, um, we have more Class Four water operators than any utility in western Kansas. Uh, we have seven operators out of fourteen are Class Four certified for water. Some communities comparable to us in our neighborhood have one or two. So, we're proud of, uh, the work they've done. The survey measures costs, so this is of particular interest to the governing body. They have a seventy-five-hundred gallon target. That's kinda their leveling mechanism in the survey. For seven thousand five hundred gallons of water, um, the city, uh, falls kind of in the neighborhood, above the median, thirty-nine-seventy-six. The median cost is forty-three-thirteen. So, we're, we're in that seventy-fifth percentile, but that's a good thing because that means we're, we're lower, uh, than what the median, uh, costs are. However, you'll notice the average bills, uh, go the opposite direction. Our average bill is fifty-one oh six. And the reason that is, is because our average usage is significantly higher than the respondents, uh, in the survey. We're well into the twenty-fifth percentile of the respondents. At eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven gallons per customer. The twenty-fifth percentile was seven thousand thirty-one and the median's five thousand six hundred and forty. It's really due to our climate and, uh, usage of water outside the home. So, that kinda covers the benchmarking survey. This is something we'll continue to do each year and we would like the opportunity to continue to keep the governing body updated on, on how that is, uh, coming along so you can get an idea. We've also been visiting with our, uh, our utility in Hayes, which is probably one of the more active, uh, water utilities, about maybe getting them to start participating in this so we could have a little, uh, more apples-to-apples comparison in terms of size. So, uh, okay. The other thing we wanna discuss is our water audit. And just basically let you know that, uh, this is how we're looking at, uh, water loss within the system. I had, when I, uh, went out to, um, the conference to pick up our award, um, the, this was a topic, uh, covered at several sessions. Some states are starting to require this. California and Texas are two states that actually require an A W W A water audit. And so, the difference between this audit and, um, just doing a plus-minus calculation is that the audit considers how robust the data is. And so, we actually answer questions about how did you get that number? How often do you meter? How many of your meters are working? How many of your meters are accurate? And so, uh, we've worked to, um, get information to determine that. And, uh, this all plays into our water audit score. A couple of things, it's a little complicated, but there's three things you need to remember in the numbers you'll see. The parent losses is an estimate based on the information we provide for systematic errors such as meter inaccuracies, theft of water, or data handling errors. So, in addition to what we provide in the field, there's a whole data infrastructure that happens, you know, on the first floor, where all that information comes together and, and is accounted for. So, that is, that is accounted for in the audit. Real losses is the measure of the utility's actual losses due to infrastructure leaks or breaks as water is transmitted through the system. And then the last number is the infrastructure leakage index. And basically, that number is the ratio between our real losses per day and unavoidable real losses. And unavoidable real losses is something that the engineers at A W W A have come up with, basically, to say. It represents the technical low limit of what you could expect in a well-managed system in good condition with aggressive leakage control. So, bottom line, the lower that number, uh, the better the utility is managing loss control. So, our parent loss per connection per day is five gallons. And these I took from the benchmarking survey. This, this actually can, is incorporated into the benchmarking survey. For the level one, the. For the level one validity, so that's, there's five levels of validity. Level one would be the absolute highest, level two is the next. The level one communities had an apparent loss per connection day of four point five five gallons. Level two validity, which we fall within that range, had an average loss per connection day of eight point eight one gallons. So we're doing well there. Real losses per connection day, that's apparent losses. Real losses per connection day is eleven point seven gallons. The level one communities had a real loss per connection day of twenty-three point five gallons. The level two community had a loss of thirty-seven point six four gallons. So again, I think we're in good shape there. And then our infrastructure leakage index is point eight zero. And then we have comparison of one point oh nine for the level one communities and two point oh for the level two communities. Last thing I want to touch on is our irrigation controller rebate. And I hope everyone in the room, if you haven't taken advantage of this rebate that you do, it's essentially free to you. And so I'll tell you what it means for you in terms of what we've measured. So we have forty controllers. We did this in pandemic season, which probably in hindsight wasn't the best time to really do a lot of outreach, but we did have forty people participate in it. Twenty-eight people, we have enough data from, based off when they installed the controller that we could, felt like we could do a year-to-year comparison. And here's what we found. Now remember that controller, when I presented that to the governing body, the EPA's guideline for that is that you should say fifteen percent. So the controllers that were installed, sixty percent of the participants used less water. Not a hundred percent, sixty percent. So that's something we'll continue to look into. Is that a, is that some other issue or is it a controller, human interface issue? However, the average savings of the seventeen controllers that used less water was twenty-two percent. And the net water savings, which includes those controllers that did not save water. So I took the water, those people that used more, went into the equation. We didn't, we didn't push them aside. So the overall savings of all the participants was five hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and eighty-eight gallons out of twenty, so for twenty-eight meters, we saved almost half a million gallons. That's equivalent to one point six nine acre feet. We have access to seven thousand acre feet of water every year, so every acre foot counts. Water savings is equivalent to the annual water consumption of nine people based on our per capita day usage. So essentially for every three controllers that went in, we gained a person or we made up for the water use of one person. The rebate program expended three thousand fifty-four dollars on the twenty-eight meters represented in this comparison. The savings to the city based on the deferred water production cost was twelve hundred dollars in the first year. If these savings continue, the deferred cost to the city will return the city's investment in two point four years, and we anticipate the savings benefit would continue well beyond that. For those controllers that did not produce the expected results, our staff are looking into that. We, we did gather information about what kind of controllers are out there and so we're going to see if we can identify any trends and see if we can reach out to those manufacturers to try and get tips that we can share with those customers or just share in general as we continue working on this program. So we'll continue to monitor the program and may provide additional recommendations to the governing body in the future regarding the expanded use of Watersense certified irrigation controllers in the city. And just one last note, so we have twenty-eight meters that we looked at here. If you had a thousand meters, getting the same result, you'd save nineteen point six million gallons a year. It'd be equivalent to three hundred and thirty people. So expanding that might, you know, as we continue to, to measure this, if it continues to provide these responses, we'll, we'll ask for an expansion probably at some point. So thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions for Fred?
Great report.
Thank you.
Good report.
Thanks Fred. Item D is the monthly zoo report. You got questions on that, we can try to answer them. Otherwise I think we're ready for nine A. The appropriation ordinance, if approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-five forty-one dash twenty twenty-one A.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number twenty-five forty-one dash twenty twenty-one A.
Second.
And there is a second? Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Ten C was a canceled public hearing. It's why we didn't stop the clock at one forty-five. So we're ready for ten D. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number twenty-eight ninety dash twenty twenty-one. Trent?
Okay. Welcome again. Governing body of the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain a nuisance conditions on private property within the city of Garden City. It's been determined that the residence located at twelve oh nine Hattie Street has environmental nuisances, conditions on the property, and is in violation of the city's environmental code. Throughout the art, there are scattered items in the front, side, and rear. Some of those items include mattresses, concrete, construction material, sinks, and a washer or dryer. Staff has visited, visited the property on separate occasions and has been unable to reach the residents and/or owners. The property owner has been notified by letter sent on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one according to section thirty-eight one thirty-seven of the environmental code of ordinances and have neither abated the nuisance conditions nor requested a hearing before the governing body. The attached resolution will allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisance on this property. The alternative is the governing body may approve the attached resolution or the all, the alternative number two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends approving the resolution. The fiscal note, the basement, the abatement cost incurred by the city shall be charged against lots or parcels of the ground on which the environmental nuisance is located. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution twenty-eight ninety dash twenty twenty-one.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second? Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following resolution regarding the purchase of real property at one forty-five Harvest Street using city idle funds. If approved, it would be resolution number twenty-eight ninety-one dash twenty twenty-one. Jared?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm excited to be up here in the role for the first time. This resolution is regarding the purchase of the property that was discussed at the last meeting on October fifth at one forty-five Harvest Street for the sale price of the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These will be used, the smaller building will be used to house the traffic department, which is currently operating out of a small space in the solid waste and recycling building. And then the street apartment will utilize the larger building for the time being. This also addresses Mike's future project potentially of the new public works facility, maybe not needing some of the other buildings because we're going to have these as well. City idle funds have been previously used to fund projects, purchases, or the issuance of temporary notes. When not used for funding the city projects and purchases, idle funds are generally invested when deemed prudent. Some of the determinants are interest rates at the time, things like that. So we would utilize the five hundred and fifty thousand from our idle funds and then it would be paid back over the next five years from the street department's budget beginning next year and there'd be no interest on those payments, so they'd pay it back just even keel. Governing body may adopt the resolution or the governing body may defer until later date and staff recommendations that we adopt the resolution.
At what point do we get to take the possession of the buildings?
As soon as the sale is processed, just, just like normal. So once that's prepared and, and the purchase goes through with those idle funds, then we would be able to take possession of us.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move that we adopt resolution number twenty-eight ninety-one dash twenty twenty-one, authorizing purchase of the real property.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second? Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. Thank you.
Thanks Jared. Item twelve A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a committee recommendation regarding the mural on the municipal court and evidence building. Stuart?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is regarding the mural issue we've talked about multiple times. Most recently on September twenty-first, you authorized a RFP to go out. I believe that went for about two weeks if I remember right, and we got four applications in. One from Mindy Allen, who's a muralist out of Jumping City. One from Dave Lowenstein, who's previously done a mural on the Keppley Men's Wear Building in Garden City. Michael Knutson, who is a art professor at Garden, at Garden City Community College, and Crystal Cruz, who is a student of Michael Knutson at the community college. So we assembled a committee of five individuals. There was Commissioner Euler, there was myself, there was Melissa Gallegos from Garden City Downtown Vision, Katie Guthrie from Garden City Arts, and Vivian Fankhouser, a resident who has worked on public art projects before. So looking at all of, all of the options, we ended up sort of agreeing that Michael Knutson's application was the best. We felt that him being local and his experience with the form of, was really valuable and we really appreciated the design he had. He presented a sort of garden-like design full of children playing with monarch butterflies. And there were a lot of things we liked about that. Obviously, you know, the garden aesthetic tying into Garden City, monarch butterflies which not only come through the area at times, but also sort of ties into a theme of immigration being, you know, connected to multiple parts of the world. It has this whimsical character to it that we feel would really enhance the energy of downtown. And one element we really liked was he has a few spots where you can pose, buy some butterflies to essentially give you wings if you take a picture, which is something that a lot of people like in their murals. And there were a few issues with his application unfortunately that we actually ended up calling him up and talking to him about. So the big one was that he was about forty-six hundred dollars over our budget of fifteen thousand. There was also an issue with the timeline where he was estimating he'd be done closer to a next summer, whereas we're ideally trying to get this done before the municipal court building opens, as I'll get into in a moment. It's probably not practical for anyone. And then also just, we'd like to potentially be able to tweak some elements that, of the design for the final version. There's in particular sort of a giant head near the side that some members of the committee felt iffy about. Talking to him, we feel that all of these issues can be resolved to a certain extent. The budget in particular, Katie Guthrie mentioned that the paints that he listed in his application are pretty high-end, so if we were to switch them out for a little more like household paint grade, which is something that the city of Great Bend has done for a lot of their projects, that'd be practical. We could also potentially simplify the design of the mural, which would make it cheaper. And yes, that is the, the design that he submitted. So we would be able to get it down within budget for sure if we worked with him. In terms of the timeline, the big issue is temperature. From what we were told, you can't really paint murals below seventy degree weather consistently, otherwise they might start to chip off. And with the timeline of when we think this building is going to be ready, last I heard sort of towards the end of the year, that's not going to be practical. His optimistic estimate is that maybe depending on his schedule at the college, he could get it done closer to March. That's of course going to depend on the weather. So it sounds like we could do earlier than summer, probably are not going to be able to make that goal of before it opens like we hoped. And then in terms of design elements, he's willing to meet with the commission in order to just make sure that you all are happy with what he has, can make any tweaks to the final design. Sorry, I remember one element we also liked that I forgot to mention is that the children that he might have in the background, he'd want to get local models so you could essentially have members of the community who are immortalized, they literally leave their mark on downtown. So overall, the committee's recommendation is that we do want to go with his design, but before making any final sort of approval that's fully official, we'd like for the commission to have a pre-meeting, oh, with Michael Knutson, I struggle with his name, I'm sorry, where you all could essentially hash out these details, make sure that he's able to get within the city's budget and also come out with a design that the commission is happy with. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
How many square feet is this, is the, the actual mural space again? Do you remember? I'm, I was looking for it and a lot of us, several of us attended a mural presentation at the League of Municipalities, which was fascinating, and Clay Center has a lot, but I can't remember. And they had recommended a certain figure per square foot.
Well, they said ten dollars was what.
Yeah, they were saying ten dollars per square foot and I was looking for.
So I don't, I can't do the math in my head right this second. If I remember right, it's about eighteen feet tall, twelve, if you're only going, if you remember, there's sort of those grooves on the wall, it's go up to that bottom groove and about eighteen to the top, and about seventy feet wide if I remember correctly. These were from my own iffy tape measure measurements. We can look at the plans if we need more down to the, down to the tack measurements, but it's about that.
Twenty by seventy would be fourteen hundred.
Yeah. Give or take an inch or two. His designs, well, all of the designs were really exciting, but this one really, yeah, I think you've made a really good choice.
We were very happy with what we saw, but.
And the selfie, and I know, not that I want to do selfies, but, but many people, it's a big deal, you know, and so it's a really neat opportunity.
Any other questions for Stuart on this? So the, the recommendation from the committee is to go with Michael Knutson, but follow up with, okay.
And I guess I should clarify, so the alternatives are, you know, go with the committee's recommendation where meet with him for a pre-meeting before voting to finalize. You can give us another recommendation just to go with now or send it back to the committee if you'd like us to go in other direction.
Okay.
And we recommend alternative one.
Sounds good. Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the committee's recommendation and meet with Michael Knutson and should they come to an agreement, award the bid to him.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's a second? Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Stuart, good job. Item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and accept the final combined public work space needs assessment study from the architect.
Just do note that Commissioner Ortiz did step down for this item.
Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Some background on this information, in December of twenty twenty, the governing body had authorized a space needs assessment to be completed for a public works facilities. The study was to determine the current and future space needs of the public works department, which are currently operating out of several different facilities located at different locations in the community. The public work selection committee was made up of city commissioner Euler and city staff, Rhonda Griffin, Casey Howard, Tim Livermore, Tyler Patterson, Carol Davidson, Aaron Stewart, and myself. This committee recommended that the, that the firm, the architect be selected from six proposals and the committee had received and interviewed to perform that study. We interviewed all of them. The governing body on April sixth of twenty twenty-one authorized the architect to perform the study for forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. The study included a site visit of all of the facilities included in the study with the, with an assessment made of the condition of the following facilities was streets, traffic, fleet, solid waste, recycling, parks and recreation. The department heads and several employees of these departments, as well as several other areas that included human resources, I T, communications, fire, airport, neighborhood development services, service and finance, Buffalo Dunes, Lee Richardson Zoo, and public utilities, so pretty much everybody in the city.
You could list who was not there, so yeah.
Just the important ones, right?
There you go, there you go. I saved the best for last.
Right, yeah, that's right.
Anyway, they completed a question there and interviewed all of those people to get their comments and regarding, you know, this facility and whether or not some of them, you know, would not necessarily be housed in the facility, but they'll use the, the services that the facility would provide like fleet or that type of thing, engineering, neighborhood services and development. So in addition to that, in looking at the space, the vehicle analysis is also completed to determine what type of equipment should be housed inside, what could be outside, what could be, I mean, inside, what could be outside, just under a covered roof. Also considered the past ten years trend of employee count in each department with the equipment used and made projections as the amount of space for, for both, what would be needed in twenty years. So in summary, the, the existing square footage of the existing facility, existing facilities is a hundred and four thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square feet and the projected need is two hundred and five thousand nine hundred square feet, so significant, more space is needed. The current land space occupies sixteen point oh acres, oh eight acres, and the new site requires twenty-six point nine two, right at twenty-seven acres, which is a property that the city owns over off of Jenny Barker Road. After reviewing this report and meeting with the architect, the committee believes that it's complete and it has fulfilled the scope and expected deliverables of what the study was intended to do. and it has fulfilled the scope and expected deliverables of what the study was intended to do. Should the governing body choose to accept the study as presented, the next step would be to authorize a complete survey of the property the city owns for the proposed public work campus. The survey would provide the information needed to help staff determine future stormwater containment issues, utility infrastructure placement, possible roadways. Then staff would come back to the governing body to consider contracting with the architect to create a site plan and possible building placement and exterior aesthetics. So the governing body is asked to consider and accept the final combined public works space needs assessment that's been performed by the architect. And Mr. Bruce Glass is here to answer any questions that you might have. I know everybody got the opportunity to review the pretty thick, very complete document. So alternatives that we'll present here is accept the combined public works space needs assessment as presented. Alternative two would be to accept the combined public works space needs assessment, excuse me, and direct staff to obtain costs to have a site survey completed of the city property on Jenny Barker Road. Or alternative three is do not accept the combined public works space needs assessment. And the staff recommends alternative two, which would be to move forward with accept the public works assessment and direct staff to obtain prices for a site survey. Then we would come back to the commission and report that later, and you could either approve that site survey or not.
I do have a couple of questions. So, and it might have been in the study, and then it was very comprehensive, and I really appreciate how well done it was. I'm curious about, I know that we are running high-speed internet out to the airport. Are we going to be able to take advantage of that? Because I know internet, or at least, you know, higher speeds of internet are going to be more important than ever before going on in the future. Will you be able to use that connection, or will it take a separate connection?
We have two options, well, actually, two or three options. There's already fiber at the utility service center.
Okay, great.
So that can be extended over. The city commission did authorize during the Jenny Barker Road construction conduit for future fiber to come to the fire station. And then that could be extended down and interconnect with that portion that went to the airport.
Because I know communications between the entire city is going to be important, especially with this facility, so.
Yes.
Okay, no, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other questions? None being, entertain a motion on this item. I'll make a motion to approve and accept the combined public works space needs assessment and direct staff to obtain cost to have a site survey completed by city, or completed of city property on Jenny Barker Road. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Bruce Glass, they did a great job.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Really good.
Thanks, Mike, thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
We'll wait for Commissioner Ortiz to come back to the bench. If we can find him. There he is.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve awarding the contract for municipal court prosecution services to Deering Griselle Cunningham, PA. The governing body authorized on September 21st the release of a request for proposals for municipal court prosecution services. There were two responses to the request for proposal. One was from the incumbent provider of prosecutor services, the Law Office of David West. The second was from Deering Griselle and Cunningham, which currently provides city attorney services. A proposal review committee with staff and elected representation met to review the proposals for the purpose of developing a staff recommendation to the governing body. The consensus recommendation of the committee was that while Law Office of David West had performed well as an incumbent, the Deering Griselle Cunningham proposal offered significant depth of experience at the attorney and staff support level. The recommendation of the review committee is therefore to award the municipal court prosecution services contract to Deering Griselle and Cunningham and direct staff to prepare a contract for consideration at the November 2nd regular meeting. Alternatives are to award the contract to Deering Griselle and Cunningham, directing staff to prepare the contract, or to award the contract to the law firm of David West and direct staff to prepare a contract for your consideration at the November 2nd regular meeting. Staff recommends alternative one. For a fiscal note, the contract is currently set at $200,000. The same fee is offered in both proposals.
Any questions on this item? Do we have any comments from, I know we have the attorneys here, any comments from the attorneys?
Yeah, I believe there's representatives of both David West, Law Office of David West, and representatives for Deering Griselle and Cunningham here, if they'd like to speak to their proposals.
Sure.
Hi, my name's David West, and I've spoken to four of you. I didn't reach Mr. Cessna, but I did get your message.
Yeah, thank you. It was a busy day yesterday.
Sure, I understand that. I think I am here and ask for your consideration, notwithstanding the city administration's recommendation to accept the other proposal. I thought a brief kind of overview of how I got from where I was to here might give a little bit of information to the commission. And then I have a few comments about some of the reasons that I see in the memo here and that I'd like you to consider also. So in 2019, Jennifer Cunningham, who you all know, obviously, has approached my wife and then myself about potentially filling a spot that the city was trying out as a contract employee or as a contracted firm to do prosecution services for the city of Garden City. After consideration, I decided that was a good idea. I thought I'd give it a try. I'd never really been a prosecutor, other than in special circumstances. When I did that, this commission approved my contract. And as of January 2020, I started my role as the Garden City prosecutor. Now, I would say, I don't know, maybe three months, probably, maybe two months of it. The first two months were training. Some of that training was from Ms. Cunningham. And I would say the other amounts of training were from Jimmy Dummermuth, who's here. Obviously, you know him too. Before, you know, we kind of parted ways. And then I was kind of left on my own, but I always viewed my job as kind of, I report to Ms. Cunningham as she was in charge of prosecution. I saw her as my boss. And I think that's reasonable. She was kind of the go-to person to talk to the administration and to communicate with the commission. If there was any problems, that's how I saw it. Now, moving forward to today, there's been at least two different groups in the clerk's office of every single member in the clerk's office, including the department head that have come and gone. Now we're on our second group. I think we've got a good group in place, and things are starting to work well, clip along in a better pace. We've got, this is the third judge that I've seen. Two of those judges, you can see, are listed as recommendations or references for me. Those are people that saw me work every single day, saw me communicate with the public, saw me communicate with defendants and victims and other attorneys that showed themselves in city court for their duties there, defending their clients. And I think it's of note to show that those people said, okay, we want you, you can put us down as references, we believe in you, and we think you're a good fit here. Moving forward, I would say all, most if not all of my feedback from the city has always been pretty positive. I'm not saying there was never any issues that needed to be addressed. One of those issues, the first time I heard of this issue, was actually one of the things they brought up in this memo about a month ago, I would say sometime in September. It's the first time I was approached with the idea that I was supposed to have an employee. And I need to backtrack a little, I got off track. Sometime in 2020, I had the opportunity to sell my office space, which is located in liberal Kansas. I sold my office space because frankly, I had an employee and I had a, I had an office space that was not really getting as much use as it needed. The expense of it was not offset by anything that was actually coming in. So as a business decision, I decided to get rid of those things. At that point, there'd been no discussion about handing over some additional requirements under the contract. I showed up, I got on track with the train and said, this is how we're doing things, and that's how I clipped along. As far as recently, and I'll go back to what I was talking about. Recently, and I'd say about a month ago, I was approached by Jennifer Cunningham, and she said, you know, we, something about, I thought, I think the contract reads you have to have an employee. And you need to start taking over discovery. And she didn't, she indicated she didn't even know that was in there until she reread it. Frankly, I hadn't read it in a couple of years, because last year, there was no termination letter, there was no RFP, and it really wasn't something that came up. My suggestion is because that was a very strange year, and we were dealing with COVID and a lot of strange situations, so maybe that was treated differently. I started feeling a little different about a week after I had that meeting with her. I reread my contract, I disagree that it requires that. I think if you read the contract itself that we're currently operating under, it actually requires me to pay for the expenses of that employee. But I will tell you, if anybody ever came up to me and said, hey, you need to have an employee from the city, I would have just done it. It's not something that, you know, I want to have a good working relationship. I don't want to have a tumultuous relationship with somebody that I'm working with and who I view in all ways as a client. I mean, the city is my client, and so that's kind of how I view things. Now, a week after we had that discussion, I got a termination letter, which was a little different because we hadn't done that before, and a request for proposal. I did that. I don't know that, I was kind of expecting somebody else to bid on it, and so that's not a surprise to me. I think who bid on it was a surprise to me, because this had kind of been my go-to person that communicated with you guys and who I'd seen as somebody that's above me, that I defer judgment to in a lot of ways. And, you know, frankly, who I have a lot of respect for also, I'm not saying that at all. I do, I do want to say a few things about this. I do have somebody ready to work for me. After that, after that meeting with her, I said, you know, I better get somebody on here. You know, some of the, I guess, negatives I see and things that I can improve on were, you know, getting some notices out to public victims, potentially. And they were talking about handing over the duty to disseminate discovery to all the other attorneys and defendants, and that is not something that had been done before. And I said, well, you know, I talked to some of the staff, and that's something that's going to take a little bit of manpower, and that's okay. So I talked to some people that I know that have worked for law firms before, that were looking for work, and I have somebody ready for November 1st. Now, the position I was in at that point, though, was knowing that there was probably going to be some bidding process, and there was going to be a decision made here about whether or not I was going to continue to be the prosecutor here in Garden City or not. And so rather than have someone come on for two weeks, I said, let's just wait until the commission makes its determination. And so the reason I bring that up is because, I don't know if it comes up or not, I doubt it will, but if it does, I want you to know, it's not that I wasn't going to do something. It was, I mean, kind of awkward timing for me. I do have somebody ready to step into that role. Now, I will note, you know, I think part of the discussion in those, in that committee, that, let's see, we, the RFP was due the 12th, I believe, and I believe that committee was a few days later. And then I heard from the city on Friday about what their recommendation was going to be. And I think some of that discussion was, you know, they've got three attorneys over at the Griselle firm, and David's only got himself. I understand that thinking, but I will tell you that it's rarely necessary to have a second attorney dealing with city court prosecution. I don't know how other people do it, but it's not something where there's a whole likelihood that you're going to need somebody else to step in. There has been a few conflicts, and Jimmy Dummermuth has filled that role. There has been a few times when I was out. I'll tell you, those were always serious, there was never any time that I was out for any reason that's, you know, unreasonable, right? Some of those times I was sick with COVID, some of those times I was in Denver at the hospital with a child, you know. It's not, it wasn't something that happened on a regular basis, maybe a few times in a year's time, right? And so I don't see that being an issue. Neither do you need, you know, any more depth of knowledge than you're going to have with somebody who's done it for a few years. This, new things, a lot of what we do in city prosecution work is going to be root. It's going to be things, you know, this is the 30th drive, no, driving without a driver's license that I've seen today, right? So it's not something that, I think, I'm not saying you can't benefit from having three attorneys that obviously have clear ties to the community, who are respected and frankly, I respect. But I think that I wouldn't personally weigh that heavily on that. What I would ask you to weigh on is, I mean, just a month ago, and I know you guys were all here. I wasn't here, I was actually gone. Ms. Cunningham was here telling you how well we were doing, and I think that says a lot. You know, I assume this wasn't, you know, and since that time, I've understood, my understanding is Jennifer Cunningham's leaving the city and then going to the Griselle, or I guess it's Deering Griselle in Cunningham, and will be the primary person kind of being the city prosecutor. That's what I think. I don't know, that hasn't been like publicly confirmed or anything, but that's what I've heard. And so with that in mind, I don't know how I feel about it. I know how it looks to me. I was kept in the dark. No one told me about any of this. I do know there's a 60-day termination clause in my contract, and you don't have to say anything to me. No one has to tell me anything. But as I saw that termination clause, it was more to be used for things where, I mean, you're not doing a good job. And so far, I haven't heard that. I've heard, you know, I've spoken to Jennifer about some things that needed to be corrected, and I've worked on those things, I haven't heard back. The main thing that seems to be being brought up is the fact that I don't have all these staff members. And I just, frankly, it's a 25, you know, even the RFP says it's a 25-hour approximated contract time. You don't need another staff member if that's all you're focusing on. So, and I'll tell you, I gave up an Oklahoma practice that was 90% of what I was doing at the time to come up here. I figured out that I liked it, and so I stuck with it, and I didn't even, I decided, I'm not taking any more private clients, I'm not doing that anymore, I want to focus on this, and I want to get better at it. I don't say that necessarily to garner, I guess, sympathy. It's more to show that I know there are people here vying for this contract and bidding for the contract that care about Garden City. But I also care, I've also done some things, self-sacrificed in some ways to keep going on this contract and to do something that I've come to like to do and enjoy doing. And so I think I've treated everyone as fairly as possible. I think the facts that I've laid out for you are true and accurate, and I just ask that you give me some consideration just for the fact that I believe we have been successful, and I think I've played a good part in that. And I've also been, if you're talking about boots on the ground down there in the court, I'm the one that's been there since January 2020. The judge hasn't been there that long, none of the people in the clerk's office have been there that long. So if you're talking about daily, every day, I've been really the person to kind of hold it together. I believe through COVID, through some staffing issues that I think everyone understands. And so I think that's more important to consider than having, you know, more than one attorney in a firm. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Dave. With the representatives from, oh, Jake's coming up. Well, okay.
I'll be brief. Mayor, Commissioners Jacob Cunningham, Mr. Dummermuth is here as well. I appreciate David's kind words. David and his spouse and I went to law school together. And so we've known each other a long time. And I think that there's a lot of mutual respect and admiration there. I'd be remiss to not mention that Jennifer would love to be here, however, she is currently on a flight to San Antonio to accept a, an award in relation to the big pool at Garden Rapids. And I think it's the, the World Water Park Association is who's hosting those awards. I, I do believe that when it comes to our firm's ability to provide professional competent legal services, we are the best services that are offered in southwest Kansas. I, I feel very strongly about that. I know that Mr. Dummermuth has spent several years in the role of prosecutor as indicated in our proposal. I've spent approximately 18 months in the role of city prosecutor. Jennifer obviously spent a couple of years in that role. And this is not intended in any way to, to undermine anybody else. We want to offer an existing client the very best services that can be offered. And I think you have that in our firm. We're right across the street. We have three very professional full-time assistants that can provide victim assistance. They can answer calls for victims. They can provide notification to those victims as required by law. We all take extreme pride in being prompt and replying. If there are phone calls that need to be returned, we will do that. We do not take those responsibilities lightly. I'm disappointed Jennifer can't be here to address some of those specific things. And I don't think that I'm in a position to do that. I think that the proposals speak for themselves. I know there are staff available to address what was discussed during that committee meeting. And I think that we would ask that you follow the recommendations of your own staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question though for Jimmy. So Jimmy, when you were working at municipal court, were you on staff, were you a contracted prosecutor or were you on staff for the municipal court?
I was, I was on staff. I was a city employee at that time.
And at that time, did we, I mean, I know the, the contract is pretty lucrative at 200,000. I mean, I don't know, I don't remember what that looked like, but I was just curious about, as a city employee, was it, was it like a full-time position or is it just a part-time position? Do you remember?
Yeah, for me, it was a full-time position. I mean, there are many different aspects of meeting with police, reviewing cases. I mean, I, I spent a substantial amount of time in that, in that position.
That position. No, thank you. I just, I, I couldn't remember when, when you were there, if that's how that was or not. And I knew a couple of years ago, that's when we went to the contracted, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. What would the commission like to do on this item?
Well, I would really like to hear from Jennifer and I didn't realize she was gone because of a, I mean, I think she's, I think she's exceptional also. I mean, there is no, absolutely no way. I don't think she's exceptional. I mean, I would like to hear from Jennifer. I, when I read that, when I read the proposals and her not being specifically named, that was a little bit hard for me. Because I want to make sure that we're very transparent about what we were going to do. And I understand that, that she couldn't be named because she hadn't tendered her resignation yet. But I'm wondering, I would love to hear from Jennifer because I do think she's really good at what she does.
I appreciate that. I would like to address that. We had a discussion about this preliminarily with the city manager and I think everybody was on the same page. Until a couple of items occurred, we weren't going to release that information. We certainly want to make sure that her name was made available well in advance of today's meeting. There wasn't any hiding the ball or anything of that nature. It was just simply a matter of timing and making sure that we had a couple of items checked off that list.
No, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion that we award the Municipal Court Prosecution Services Contract to Dorian Griselle and Cunningham PA and direct staff to prepare a contract for consideration at the November 2nd, 2021 regular meeting. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
That item passed, three to two.
I would like to thank the staff for entertaining the questions about this yesterday after hours and getting us more clarification about the process and all the background information to.
I appreciate both the attorneys coming and speaking. I mean, that means a lot to us. And so, I mean, I really do. We're, we're excited about what's happening in municipal court, especially with the new business building. That's going to be a huge benefit to our community, so.
All right. Thank you. Moving on. Go to the consent agenda.
Item 12D is the consent agenda. As shown on the agenda, it's items one through three.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda D1 through three.
I'll second.
There is a second? There has been a second by Commissioner. Will there any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. No other business. We'll go to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Ortiz is at first.
Well, I think a lot has happened in the past week. I know state and sports and things have been happening. So I was fortunate enough to get over to watch my daughter, Emma, play in state. Fortunately, she did not make it. She was cut barely, but hey, we're still, we still love her and proud of her for going out and doing her best. So, and to those others, two girls too also that he were, were cut. But yeah, so just be with those, prayers for those that are on the road for that travel and they're, they're headed home today. So. But also would like to thank staff for giving us the information, opportunity for us to just talk about some issues. Trent, good job. I know it's tough with, with citizens coming up here and, and talking and, and asking for whatever it is they need or, or to dismiss something that they think is, is in the wrongdoing. But appreciate all that information that we're able to, to get out there and, and kind of discuss and share and come up with the best solution. It's, it's not easy. It's, it's tough and it's, I think we just, we do our best. The city does an awesome job on getting us information. And, and we up here have to make an informed and professional decision. So we, we thanks for, we thank you for all of those citizens and we look forward to just moving ahead together as a community. So, thank you.
Commissioner Euler.
I enjoyed attending the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference in Topeka last weekend. It was a lot of fun. And I wanted to congratulate Grant Myers III. He received a 40-year employee award while he was there. And it was fun to get a chance to visit with him, meet his family and just see the pride that they had in working for the city for 40 years. And so it was, it was quite a fun time to be able to do that. Also had a chance to attend the diversity breakfast. I enjoyed listening to Fernando Alvarez talk about his experiences in Guatemala. It was a country that I had a, just a small amount of information about. Didn't really have a deep, you know, a lot of information. And, and so it was really, I really enjoyed that. And also just congratulations to Fred and to Mike on all of the awards. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Dick.
A lot of the things that Deb just said, I'll just skip them. Yeah, the Kansas League of Municipalities was a good meeting. Good to recognize our employees there. For 40 years is amazing. And of course Fred and, and Mike for their awards. Thanks for the pre-meeting this morning. It was good. Understand our strategy for social marketing. So it was really good and really interesting to see how those reports came out. And then the last thing is just, like, like Fred was saying, if you have the ability to put in a water sense sprinkler, I've actually did that over COVID. And it does, at least the one that we got is amazing. Like their water bill is so much lower, which probably means that we were doing something wrong ahead of time. So go ahead and, and take advantage of that if you can. If we can get that, offset that cost within a couple of years, I mean, we really need to encourage anybody in town to do that. Like you're saying, for every three people that install it, that's one more person that can move into town. And we're already offsetting that water. So good program and good job all around.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrew.
Yes, so excellent pre-meeting. I love our communications department and what they talk about in the city. If you are not on Facebook, not that you have to be on it a lot, but there are some really excellent information. I really appreciate all the different departments. And oftentimes it's really, it's really a public safety, but it's also a public awareness. So I really appreciate that. I, you know, whenever Fred, they develop those, when those water use reports come out, a lot of people stop by my office and show me their report. And so, I mean, some are happy and some are not. I understand. Mine, I'm working on ours to get ours less than our neighbors, but so far we've not, we've not been successful. I do want to say that the cultural relations committee did an incredible job of the diversity breakfast. You know, Fernando Alvarez is a personal friend of mine, but his story is really of the American dream. He came here with really absolutely nothing, but was supported by local community members who really cared a lot about his mission and his growth. And he is an incredible story. He pays that forward time and time again, welcoming lots of people from across the country. I really enjoyed the other young man from, from Guatemala also, who I thought was, that was just fascinating, interesting. I do own a couple of Michael Knutson pictures. They are super. I bought them at Art in the Park. They, he is, I think he's an excellent choice. The mural I am totally pumped about. And I'll be glad to take your picture when it's up. But I just am really excited about, public art is something I really care about. I love the, at the League of Municipalities, which was excellent training. I really enjoyed that one. I also enjoyed the census. I was hoping for more information, but I will tell you that Garden City is growing and we are a standout out in southwest Kansas. Last thing I want to mention is the awards. I know that these awards are earned. They're not just given. And so it takes a lot. I know that Mike and, and Fred accept these awards on behalf of lots and lots of people who work in the city. And so I really appreciate that you honoring them the way you do. And then also just thank you for continuing to make, keep Garden City, make Garden City look great. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention tomorrow is the state of the city during the chamber breakfast. And like Matt mentioned, we'll be up a lot earlier or maybe same time, just have to go to a different location. But that'll, that's always a good event for, to provide the community a lot of good information about what's taking place in the city. Also this week, already nine weeks has passed for the school district and parent teacher conferences are taking place this week. No school on Thursday and Friday. Wanted to mention that this is, this is kind of, this is the last commission meeting before we go into November. Election Day is November 2nd. And there's really no reason, really no reason for you not to go out and cast your ballot and make your voice be heard. If you're a registered voter, you can cast your ballot in advance. Yes, that is correct. You can head to the early voting location or request a mail-in ballot. You have no excuse not to speak up and make your voice heard on the direction of our community. Fannie County Election Office is at 311 North 9th. The regular office hours are nine to four Monday through Friday, nine to seven on October 28th and 10 to two on October 30th. And on Monday, November 1st, the office will be open from nine until noon. They'll close the office to get prepared for the election day on November 2nd, which the election is, hours are seven in the morning until seven in the evening. So please go out and make your voice be heard. This is, they're always an important election, but you know, every election is important, but this election again helps direct how our community moves with elected officials. So that's my rant on that. Did attend the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference. I was elected to serve on the League's governing board for a three-year term. So really excited about that and a lot of good direction. Big article in the, in the Kansas Government Journal on page 244. So smiling face in that as well. And then again. Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll make extra copies. Yeah. I'll make extra copies there for anybody. But yeah, great conference. Attended a number of, of, of events at that. Really shows at the events I attended that, you know, Garden City is in the forefront of, of communities out in Kansas. There are a lot of communities that do have issues that they need to work through. And I was going to bring up some things in some of our conferences to get their input, but listening to other, where other communities are at, I just tucked my questions away because some of the other communities have bigger issues than we do. So it really shows when you go to these conferences, how well we're doing, not only in western Kansas, but in the, in the state as a whole. I did attend on running meetings in a more effective manner. I found out that we run meetings pretty effectively. But just wanted to pick up some pointers, but found out that, also attended one on regional housing, because we do have housing issues. But after sitting through that meeting, found out that we're, we're really doing a good job in our area and trying to attract and build housing, especially RHID, and really being innovative in our area. And that was really about it. I did attend, attend the diversity breakfast. Oh, I wanted to do a shout out to Grant Myers. 40 years. That is a long time for a person to serve in a job, in a community. We do have a number of people that have served that in our community. And it really shows the dedication of our staff in our community and how well they want to serve our community. And this is really, you know, in, in a government job as it being per se, you know, people really do serve their community. And 40 years is awesome. And speaking with Grant and his family, really neat family. And he's, he's really awesome. He talked about serving a lot longer and I was like, kind of stunned and shocked how long he wanted to serve longer in his position. And I was like, good luck, you know. I did attend the diversity breakfast, a great, a great event. Really shows how we're diverse in our community. And, and holding these really helps us to better, be better citizens in our community because we learn a lot more about other cultures in our community. So a, a great event and turned out well. And a lot of people did attend that event. And a great pre-meeting about our communications department and all the great things that they're doing. I just want to wrap up and thank the city on behalf of USD 457 for letting us use the city chambers. We used them last night for the board of education. We're updating our HVAC system. So it's pretty much a construction destruction zone in our, in our building at this time. And we'll use these chambers for a few months as we get through that construction process. So I'd just like to thank the city staff for helping out last night again and making that board meeting a success. And on that note, I'll call this meeting adjourned.